Okay, we'll call the order of the regular city council meeting Tuesday, November 12th, 7:00 PM roll call.
Toby Nelson.
Michelle Otto.
Herbie Moynah.
Sam Solars.
David Paradise.
Jessica Bonnewell.
Jackie Hines.
Spencer Johnson.
There won't be an invocation pastor Kathy had other obligations tonight because it's a Tuesday, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we approve the agenda, there are a couple of additions to make. Under Parks and Recreation, there'll be a number three, application of Michael Crum. And then under New Business, A cannabis-related items, number four, Resolution 2024-38. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I will second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Vote aye, Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. On page 29, what is the, how does that work for the op duty officer for a wedding for 520 to 50? Do they just reimburse the city or what is?
On page 29.
The renter pays for the city and then the city pays the county.
Okay, okay. And then on, under the stormwater or the delinquent sewer water taxes, at what point do we like give water shut offs? Because we have one here for almost $1,800.
So in the winter it's over $500 and in the summer it's over $250.
So how do we get up to almost 1,800?
Well, just depending on what your monthly bill is.
Any other discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Voting?
Yeah.
Oh, aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Vote aye, Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Wright County Sheriff's Office, I don't see them here, so we'll come back to them. Oh, really? Perfect. Right on time. You're up.
It was a pretty busy month, September, October. Had 247 calls for service, 92 of those were traffic stops, the rest were kind of miscellaneous across the board. Nothing, nothing crazy to report this month. Just trying to stay busy out there and wait for that snow to start falling and heard possibly this weekend, so fun stuff. Does anyone have any questions for me or concerns?
I think we're good, thank you.
Already awesome, you guys take care of it.
Thanks, you too. Timing. Stay safe.
You too, I too.
2024 election certification of election results canvassing board.
Mayor and council included in your packet this evening is a resolution to approve the canvassing results for the November 5th, 2024 municipal election results. They were not available when the packet went out, but they were available on the table and council got copies of them, plus the summary votes. So if you are in agreement or approval of that, we would just be looking for a motion to approve that.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-35. A resolution canvassing the November 5th, 2024 municipal election returns and declaring results.
I will.
Further discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Vote aye, Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. City Council.
I had city council, park and rec and the town hall discussion on water.
Movie in the park.
Oh, and movie in the park, thank you, Michelle, forgot about that.
Council, the movie in the park, the trunk retreat, Halloween dance, town hall.
City Council, EDA and the town hall meeting.
Council, town hall, movie in the park, League of Minnesota Cities Fall Forum webinars.
City Council, EDA, town hall and the movie in the park and fire department.
Good evening, mayor and council. In your packet is the activity report for October, 22 total calls, which puts us down 71 calls for the year so far, so we're enjoying a little bit of a calmer year still, which all the guys are very happy about. Pretty busy month for us, we had fire prevention in the first part. Myself and the other officers went to our annual chiefs conference for a week and then we did our adopt a highway cleanup. Special acknowledgements that I'd just like to mention, kind of especially as all the firefighters who helped during fire prevention and then everybody who came out and did the adopt a highway with us as well, so. Next item is seeking permission to contract for grant writing services for the 2024 Assistance to Fire Grant with Neil Mihoffe. He charges a $600 fee, which is reimbursable if the fire department award is granted, so if we win it, we get some of that money back anyways. Not 100% sure what we're going to put in for the grant this year, still trying to finish off the last grant as well, but if you don't try, you're not going to win, so I figure we'll put it in for some bigger ticket items and stuff and see if the dice fall our way. So just looking for permission to contract with Neil again this year.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for grant writing services with Neil Mihoffe for $600 fee.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
All vote aye, Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Then bringing back up the table item from the October city council meeting, the Relief Association requesting exemption to having to hire a deputy sheriff for our annual dinner on February 1st of 2025.
What's the reasoning?
We've never had one there in the past 40-plus years that we've been doing it. We have direct contact via radio and phone with dispatch and deputies. We generally invite the deputies there. There are usually several deputies who come and enjoy the prime rib dinner with their family, one that works the prime rib dinner. We've never had any issues. Our bar is staffed by trained bartenders and they're the only ones who are serving. That comes with our catering license and everything like that, so we're not serving out of a cooler and just handing beers left and right and stuff like that. So they do check IDs when the questionable people come up and they, we're using their
Are we going to be enforcing the contracts that we have in place? Don't we have that contract?
So I guess there's one of three things that we could do for this. One would be to grant that and to give them exemption and we would have to write that into the rules, I would imagine. We could require them to pay for the deputy for those four hours or I think the city gets a free use once a year, correct? So I mean, those are kind of the three options I guess we have in this scenario. What would it cost for those four hours or three hours, whatever it would need?
300 and some bucks.
And then 105?
Well, we would need them for three hours, five to eight. Should be like $105 times three, so 315.
Here's where I'm at. I don't think we can set the precedence. With that being said, they are first responders and deputies will be on site, so I guess I'm kind of, I'm torn on this one.
This kind of goes back to another group asking if they could have like somebody besides Wright County officers working. And I know last month it was stated that it hasn't been enforced, but it has been enforced because there is another group, actually a business here in town that lost money because an event had to be canceled because they didn't have a Wright County officer, because it has never been enforced before until June of 2024, when it was enforced. So I think we need to move forward the way the contract is, as much as it kind of sucks, but we did set a precedence back in June. And that the group that did have the contract, or I'm sorry, the group that was doing it was under their licensing, they had their own bartenders from their business, so.
I think that leaves us with really two options, is either use the exemption or make it, get paid for. I think, I mean, I do, I do agree, you do, if we're going to make a new contract for, we have to probably, I mean, I think you have to enforce it across the board. It is a special situation since there is first responders and whatnot going to be there, but it is still an event that is having alcohol. So I, I mean, I would lean towards, since it is the fire department, I would probably
Kristi, is that an exemption or is it just half price? Do you remember? Half price?
Fifty percent off. And so, because they ask every time they've offered it to, they always ask the city first, if we don't need it for something, we can extend it to another group.
And who is that, has that historically been used every year?
Since, since we started enforcing it, which was in 2023, it was used by the city in 2023, extended to celebrate Montrose in 2024.
So Celebrate Montrose got, we paid 855 in 2024.
Yeah, so you got.
For the officers.
What did the city use it for in 2023?
Ball harvest.
Oh, that's right, yep.
You get one, you get one of those a year, so we could extend it to the fire department in 2025, since we haven't used it.
The half price deal, right?
I mean, if we're leaning not exempting them, then I think that that's next best option.
Do you, do you ever make it public how much is made on the dinner?
No, we don't publicize it, but it's not very much on the dinner itself.
No, right, yeah. It's on.
Two years ago, we broke even. Last year, I think we might have made a couple hundred bucks.
Is there, is there any reason we cannot use the half price exemption and then provide that service as a city, like we do for Biffy's for Celebrate Montrose or Fall Festival or other items? That way, the overall cost is still zero. I mean, we do provide certain items for multiple groups throughout the year.
Can you rephrase that?
Rephrase that?
So you're saying that the city?
Use the half price exemption and then actually pay the bill for the?
Isn't that kind of like double dipping though? Because you're getting two perks from the city.
So you would suggest that we don't take advantage of half price and pay full price?
Well, no.
That's why I'm asking.
But I mean, you would be giving half price plus paying the remainder, right?
I mean, semantic wise, yes. I mean, we're still out the same amount of money either way. I mean, if it makes it more comfortable for people, I could say, I could see us paying the whole four hour bill or three hour bill.
And I would say that you would be setting a precedence for other groups to come and ask for the same thing.
I'm more than willing to listen to their question, I mean, we have groups ask for stuff all the time.
I mean, would be the same as Celebrate Montrose, using the 50% off last year and getting the Biffy's and music paid.
Right.
So it's really the same, it's just a different group.
How much for the Biffy's last year?
Hmm.
Over, over 10.
I think.
No, I believe the city paid the first thousand on the minibus and then another 25 towards the van, 2,500, 3,500 total roughly.
So I guess double dipping has been set then.
So it would be for three hours, right? And we're talking $315?
No, it's less than that, so it's $95 per hour. I just pulled up their contract. $95 per hour times three hours is 285 divided by two is 140, 250. I'd have to go back and look, we might want them for four hours, three and a half. I have to double check. So our dinner goes from five to eight.
Alcohol is only served in front of you.
Is it? Okay, then that answers that question.
So the one time you use, and I don't know, but, so it covers a lot more than three hours, right? So then we could still technically keep that and just pay the 385?
285.
285, I mean, if we're going to use a half off exemption, I'd rather use a place where we're getting more for our money. I don't want to hire an officer for one hour and go, oh, we only had to pay for half an hour.
I have to hire him for three.
I know, but I mean, whereas if there's another event that's open, such as Celebrate Montrose and we can utilize half off on that, it's much more worth our money. In my mind, I would, I would make a motion just to cover the cost of the deputy, but require one.
Are you making a motion? Did you make a motion?
Kevin, would, would the fire department or the city, I guess, be willing to just take a donation from a private residence to pay for the three hours of the fire department dinner?
The fire department has nothing to do with it, the Relief Association.
The Relief Association dinner, sorry.
Donations, generally speaking, donations that even the fire department receives, we push to the Relief Association just because it's cleaner and budget stuff and resolution stuff and things like that, so.
I would be willing to take the $285 on my last mayor check to pay for the fire Relief Association dinner to have a police officer in February if we can do that. That won't solve the problem for next year, but I would be more than glad to just donate that $285.
Luckily, you're setting the precedent for all mayors.
Yes, Sam.
I will second.
Wait, was that a motion?
Yes.
So Toby's motion failed for lack of a second.
Yep.
Further discussion on my motion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll abstain, Ms. Otto?
I'm abstaining.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero two.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin.
Mayor and council included in the packet tonight is the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, the AFSMI union contract for January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2027. Myself, along with council member Solars, Mayor Moynah, the attorney Mary Teigen, the union rep from AFSMI and Jackie and Dan sat down and negotiated this contract within the last few months, I would say. If there's any questions about that, I know we've had a closed session to discuss it.
It's, I mean, it's the exact same as the other contract and I actually did see in here too, that after that was calculated into the budget there, that we dropped money from last year. Is that correct? I mean, that's skipping a little ahead here, but. Yeah, it looked like on the budget piece of it that we, it looked like had a significant, well.
Yes, and I'm sorry, I apologize. I had my notes, it's in the, actually, it's in the budget notes.
7257.
So yeah, with the negotiation of the contract, in the original budget, it was calculating for 100% paid for by the employer, this is at 95%.
I just wanted to make sure that that was, I read that correctly, so. Any other discussion, otherwise do your motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the American Federation of State, State, County and Municipal Employees, Minnesota Council Number 65 agreement.
I will second.
Further discussion?
This is with a nine and a half percent pay increase rate?
6% colon, 3.5% merit, that's correct.
Performance base?
Yes.
Okay, how did you guys come up with the COLA? When COLA right now for 2024 is 3.5% and 2025 is 2.5%?
We went exactly as the 49ers contract.
So if we have the two contracts that are identical, can't we just have one union?
Supervisors can't be in the 49ers.
So why are we having the same exact contracts if one is a supervisory and one is not?
No, I mean, I'll contradict your point with something you said last year, though, is that in the past, you've always had the contracts either the same or very similar.
Similar.
So that there wasn't issues with, between the employees.
Right. Yeah, they are similar, but what made us go with identical contracts is just what my question is.
Because if we wanted to fight it and there was not a deal that was reached, what's the next steps? Well, I'm asking.
No, I get why you did, but you're saying the contracts are identical, so are we following then the on-call, all of that stuff, being identical to?
I guess there is one difference, because there is one for if the public works director has to fill in, in case we do not have another employee that's able to work.
Okay. That's just my question, that's it.
So yes, there is one difference, I guess, maybe a couple, but that's, that's the only one I could think of. Any other discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
No.
All vote aye, Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes four one. EDA.
Yeah, so we met, when was that, October 15th, some of the big things, member Strode went to the First Children's Finance Conference and kind of got some information there relating to daycare centers again. In the past, we found out that you needed about 14 to 20 members to get this going. She is getting more information, but it looks like we can find a way to get a group going for, I believe, four to six people to start the process of it, so she'll have more information come December from them, so we'll be, we'll continue to work with them on that. And then we had a review of our Wright County EDP and Greater MSP partnership. Jess, you attended that meeting, and this one basically was just to base, bring out any project ready, RFI, RFPs to us, so people are looking to build commercially, all that kind of stuff, and get us on the map for those kind of projects as well. So that's ongoing there. And then we had Ms. Mininger from the Wright County EDP. So the job there that Ms. Jolene Foss was in has been vacated, but hopefully they will be having a position filled there soon. So that's the updates on the EDA.
I actually did have a conversation with the acting chair of the EDP today, which is Patrick Baumann, or Bumgardner, sorry, that used to be at the bank here in town. And he had talked about the Greater MSP that you had attended and that they want to do more involvement with the Greater MSP so that Wright County itself is advertising vacancies, whether it be Montrose, Delano, Howard Lake, Otsego, Annadale, and so businesses are looking out this way more instead of staying in the metro areas that, so they're, they're going to be working a little closer with the Greater MSP and trying to do at least annual, if not twice a year with them, something to help kind of get Wright County in the available land that's. help kinda get Wright County in the available land that's here, out there. So, I mean, if we can kinda keep, as far as Montrose goes, the available, you know, commercial areas or just available land, I guess, for sale here, you know, up to date, it'll, it'll help with potentially bringing in more businesses.
Uh, yeah, that meeting was great. It was full of great information, um, kind of like, kind of a roadmap to how to get ready to be project-ready, um, kind of having all the utility information, um, transport information, like, will they have access to rail lines? Will they have access to the highway? Will they have access to an airport? Like, all those things have it all in one place, so that when we're ready to develop, which won't be until we're ready with our wastewater stuff right now, um, because we're at capacity or to the point where we can't really approve any more new commercial developments until we figure that out. Um, but once we get there, that we should have all that stuff ready to go, kind of almost in a binder, like, yep, this site would work, this site would work, we have this, this has these utilities, um, but it was a great meeting with great information, and, uh, I hope they continue to do that.
Uh, kind of along those same lines. I was going through the website last week, and underneath the EDA, some of those flyers are a little outdated. Think maybe we can get in touch with said developers and.
I'll let Tom know.
That's, that's why they're outdated. He was the last one.
He was the last one.
He was outdated when he made it.
It wasn't an old job, was it?
We can work on that with EDA.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we have the original file that those were, or at least a copy of the file, so you don't have to recreate them?
Um, I think the last time I ended up trying to create something similar, I'll have to look, yeah, 'cause all I had was a PDF file, so.
Okay.
I'll look into that, yeah.
Anything else on EDA? Uh, planning and zoning.
Uh, mayor and council included, in the packet for this evening is, uh, just the minutes from the October ninth planning and zoning meeting. We had a public hearing to discuss, uh, the cannabis zoning buffers, um, that are gonna be put in place in between commercial and industrial areas and places like schools, parks, uh, residential rehabilitation facilities, um, public places like that. That ordinance is not quite ready yet. Um, the attorney and the planner are kind of still going back and forth about a couple things, and it depends on whether or not, um, the city signs onto the JPA, the Joint Powers Agreement with Wright County, um, on whether or not some of that is valid or needs to be changed, so it kind of is depending on what happens tonight. Um, but that will be, otherwise, that will be coming to the December meeting to set those, um, those restrictions on the buffer zones.
But otherwise, the, the ordinance is good to go, just waiting on the JPA stuff?
Yeah, and then there is an ordinance in the packet tonight for the public smoking piece of it, but this would only address, like, the zoning piece of it, and then, um, if there's anything else that comes up in between now and then. Seems like new things every day with this, so we'll see.
Anything for planning and zoning? Okay, uh, Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, mayor and council. We just finished up our November meeting, so quick updates. We had our October movie in the park. Uh, got some comments back on that, so I'm gonna try to adjust for, um, upcoming movies in the twenty twenty-five year. Uh, volunteer program and photo contests. We didn't have any submissions for photo contests, so we're gonna make do with, uh, what we got uh, for updating the brochure. Uh, volunteer program, uh, no interest as well, so we are, made a motion today to request from council the approval of setting forth some kind of letter uh, for either school, high school students where, uh, Parks and Rec or the city itself can confirm hours and sign off for, uh, volunteer hours for either college application or what have you. There is, uh, thought, too, uh, we may be able to use some of the actual forms from the schools, so we're gonna reach out, uh, from some of the local schools, see what they have for volunteer information, and then either copy or draft around.
So that's would just be putting together, like, a volunteer application?
You have volunteered for X hours for the city of Montrose doing X tasks. Garbage cleanup, weeding, hoeing, general city improvement. Uh, we certify that, not certify, but, um, that person was, he volunteered for twenty hours in the year of twenty twenty-five.
And so you just mailed this out to everyone in Montrose, or?
If we have a volunteer program, uh, well, our secondary hope is to advertise more of the schools, surrounding school areas, uh, Montrose and, you know, awful alike, so. Um, just more so as a certification handed off to the, to the student itself, themselves, 'cause they're gonna have to sign up, show up to us, um, and so on. So, um, pretty much at the end of, hey, I'm done volunteering, how long do you think you're gonna volunteer? Um, okay, put you on that kind of plan, and then at the end of the year, if they don't do it, they don't get their letter. Or they get a note of how many hours they did.
I was gonna say, I don't know, we, I didn't, I don't think we discussed it earlier, but who is going to certify that they fulfilled their obligation?
Probably whoever's the chair of Parks and Rec. If they follow, follow the volunteer program form through Parks and Rec, it should probably be Parks and Rec. If city mayor wants to get on it, too, why not?
So, you're looking just for approval to go out for this?
Just to be able to, uh, when we get all the pertinent information, we'll provide you a copy. Um, just for, like, the approval of the stationary text and just for this kind of avenue for increased, uh, advertisement for the volunteer program and a little bit more incentive.
And so just so I'm clear, it's gonna get dispersed to the schools, and then are we gonna, like, mass mail this out to everyone in Montrose, or you're just through the schools?
More so, we continue, um, our newsletter, Facebook pressing for the volunteers, and then that way, we don't have to mail out five hundred letters. So that's anyone that comes in in interest to the volunteer program, they can know that this letter, um, is kind of an added incentive besides, uh, volunteering.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, if we could send it to the counselors at the different schools, um, and I mean, I honestly would even say if we could send it to the, um, head of Wright County Probation even, that they could find, whether it's juveniles or adults that need volunteer hours in their community. Um, which, I don't think there's any relation, but her name is Tammy Solars, who's the head of Wright County Probation.
No, no relation. Make that clear.
I know, uh, in college, when, uh, one of my jobs was, like, doing the, like, I worked at a thrift shop that took in people doing hours like that. There is, I think, a little bit more to it than just signing off on hours. I'm, can't remember, it's been a while.
So, my question then is, so if, say, like, somebody wants to come in and volunteer for the community garden.
Sure.
And they, who's gonna be there to prove that they did an hour or two hours, or is there gonna be, 'cause that's how it would be with?
That you, you have to have, in that particular situation, if it's for, like, court service hours.
Yep.
You have to have somebody that supervises.
That's the more snafu with, um, the, that side of it, uh, for volunteer hours, it can be set up more in advance, once we get that volunteer sheet in with contact information, uh, you know, Parks and Rec reaching out and saying, hey, what is your time available? These are programs that we have available. It's gonna be a lot of garbage cleanup, maybe some sort of snow shoveling, garden cleanup, that kinda thing. Or even volunteering at a Parks and Rec movie event, that kinda thing.
I think your best avenue is still through the schools, like, Honor Society and stuff like that. Um, maybe Boy Scouts. I, I don't know offhand.
Yeah, any Eagle Scout programs in the area or anything like that.
Any motion for this, then, or just a consensus, nodding of the head? Go ahead and we'll take a look at it when they.
Go ahead and make a motion, sure.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the writing of a volunteer program to be distributed, uh, to all parties in the Montrose community area for volunteering in the parks.
To be brought to council.
Oh, I said drafting of a letter.
All right, fair. I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mizato?
Aye.
Vote aye, Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Uh, we're putting our, uh, collaborating with, uh, other community, uh, Lions, um, Boy Scouts, uh, uh, Celebrate Montrose, just to kinda get, gather out, reach out, get that community event, uh, so we're still working on that. Progress is going good. Um, the other. Do they have the co, they don't have, they do have the copy of Michael or, but not the agreement for painting? It is in the packet, okay. Well, now, I'll jump back, 'cause I'm out of order, uh, the independent contractor agreement that should be in the packet for, uh, the mindful art, uh, painting for twenty twenty-five. Uh, Christie put together an independent contract vendor agreement. I looked it over. I didn't see anything that was, caused any heartburn or heartache, so. I would be the approval of the council for this independent contract vendor agreement for four times in the twenty twenty-five calendar year. Uh, we have dates kinda scattered out. Um, but one for seniors, one for children, one for adults, and then the last one of the year is the mixed bag, so we can see, like, that's for open, open seniors, kids, who have you. Um, and then just kind of see how that popularity is going with that program.
And I believe that's for a total possible of three hundred dollars per event.
Correct.
Coming out of Park and Rec's budget.
Correct.
So, previously discussed.
So I'll make a motion to approve the agreement, um, of twelve hundred dollars for four painting classes in twenty twenty-five for Park and Rec.
I will second.
Uh, I just, just wanna clarify, so we're, all, not just the twelve hundred dollars, but we're approving the independent contractor agreement?
Yeah, correct.
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
How about aye, Mizato?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Uh, we're getting, waiting on some more information, 'cause we have two potential, um, uh, ball teams, one T-ball, one coach pitch. Uh, we're waiting on more information. Hopefully have something by the end of December, January time. Uh, um, we did receive a verbal commitment from Bolton and Mink for a sponsorship of fifteen hundred dollars for a twenty twenty-five music event. Um, so we already have, working on calendar items for that. Uh, got a list of vendors and bands to review and see who we can get. Um, we are also looking into a, uh, DNR outdoor recreation match grant, uh, for a potential basketball court. Uh, Christie has so kindly reached out to a handful of other cities that have filed this. It's a lot of basketball courts and a lot of pickleball courts. So, uh, she's currently reaching out to one that had a successful grant and, um, just kinda talking about the process, so, just kind of. Uh, in the future, uh, would probably be around spring twenty twenty-five, uh, for submission. Uh, and then most likely this project would be in twen, summer of twenty twenty-six. That's just a, that's just a general update. No motion needed on that one. Uh, and then our last bit of information is the, uh, new Parks and Rec application of Michael Crum, uh, which I would look forward a resounding. Please, yes.
He didn't have any issues with the meeting day and time, right? I, I mean, I think it's great. Uh, I wish he wouldn't have sold himself short on some of this, because I know I've seen him doing some volunteering around the community. He wrote, no, I do not volunteer around the community, but I've seen him doing it.
A humble person.
Yeah. Uh, I'll make a motion to accept, uh, Michael Crum on the Park and Rec Commission.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mizato?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Michael Crum's Parks and Rec, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Josh, thanks, Josh.
City engineer.
Evening. In your packet, there are several pay applications that we have on the agenda this evening. Um, starting out on page one hundred, you'll find the Highway Twelve Water Main Replacement Project Pay Application One. All work for the project is completed, and the pay application is in the amount of three hundred fifty-five thousand four hundred dollars and fifty-one cents, with a remaining retainage amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred, five dollars and twenty-nine cents. So. Um, you wanna go through all of these, or make a motion to approve them one at a time?
Yeah.
So. Your motion, uh, or do you have any questions on the project?
I'll make a motion to approve the pay application number one for the Highway Twelve Water Main Replacement Project.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Do they have any kind of, uh, I don't think warranty is the correct term, but if something were to fail in the next however long, do they come out and just replace it without any charge?
Yes, they're, I mean, we would have to evaluate it, and we do.
Right.
Within that, but there is a two-year warranty period.
Okay, okay, so it is a warranty on it, then?
Yes, correct.
I don't know if they called it that for water mains.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's why we have testing on that, those items, and if there were to be any failures on that, then they would be warranted.
Perfect. That's the one thing I wanted to make sure of, just 'cause, especially with that one, we've had so many issues over the last few years. I wanted to make sure we didn't run into that again in the middle of wintertime, and then the city's out another three hundred some thousand dollars to have it repaired again next year, so.
No, and there were some warranty items on the downtown project that were actually just completed this last season, so. Um, so, I have number two that I have.
Any other discussion on that?
Sorry.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mizato?
Aye.
How about aye, Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Now you can go.
Great. Uh, I have number two that I have in your packet is the Pay Application One for the Twenty Twenty Four Street Improvement Project, and that is in the amount of two hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred seventy dollars and thirty-one cents, with a retainage amount of five thousand, four hundred, thirty-five dollars and fourteen cents remaining. Any questions on the Twenty Twenty Four Street Improvement Project?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Pay Application Number One for the Twenty Twenty Four Street Improvement Project.
I'll second.
Further discussion? I'm not gonna run down the line, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Great. And then the third item that I have for you is the Pay Application One and final pay application for the Pheasant Hills Drainage Improvement Project in the amount of twenty thousand, eight hundred forty-one dollars and sixty cents. Um, so, and there would not be any retainings since it's the final, so. Any questions on the Pheasant Hills Drainage Improvement Project?
And this was part of the agreements that we approved earlier that will all get paid back, so we're just paying it upfront. They're gonna pay it back in assessment.
Correct.
We, um, we have gotten paid by one of the property owners for her portion. Um, and they made a comment that it was very well done, so she's very happy with the work.
I'll make a motion to approve Pay Application Number One for the Pheasant Hills Drainage Improvement Project.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Great. The last item that I have for you in your agenda this evening is the Cooperative Agreement with, um, MinDOT for the Highway Twelve Project. Uh, so, we've reviewed the Cooperative Agreement, and it's all routine items, um, that we expected to see, and. cooperative agreement, and it's all routine items, um, that we expected to see, and it includes mainly, um, city maintenance items include, uh, storm sewer maintenance, uh, sidewalks and paths, basically the snow plowing or snow removal items. The lighting improvements, uh, are going to be city-owned and maintained as well as operated, so there is some monthly city costs involved with those items. Uh, signal, there's a operating cost with the signal system that's being replaced at Trunk Highway Twenty-Five, um, as well as, um, there's some minor maintenance items that are all standard language. And then, um, the pedestrian flasher system at Center Avenue is being replaced, and that will be owned, operated, and maintained by the city after it has been replaced. And so those pretty much take care of the operation and maintenance items involved with the project, and then the, there's an estimated city cost of approximately three hundred five thousand dollars for the city participation portion of the project, so, which is in line with what we were anticipating. So. Any questions on the cooperative agreement? I know it's, there's a lot of information in it, but I tried to summarize it, so.
Not on the agreement itself. My question would be, so the only thing that's changing as far as Highway Twelve goes is they're adding a turn lane at Zephyr, right? Otherwise, they're just resurfacing straight on through.
They're adding...
And doing some lighting improvements.
Correct. Yep, and there's some ADA improvements on the sidewalks and, and path and whatnot, so.
There's not gonna be any large bump outs into the highway or?
No.
Any changing? It's, the highway's gonna stay the same size that it is right now?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So, I mean, yeah, outside of the, the turn lane that they're adding, so they, they will need to widen, um, Highway Twelve slightly.
By Zephyr?
East of, yes. Yep, so to the east of Trunk Highway Twenty-Five, 'cause they're adding a left, shared left turn lane through the end of, I believe that's Zephyr is the eastmost road at the, um, industrial park, yeah.
Now, I didn't, I couldn't tell on the plans that I saw, but is, is there a right-hand turn lane being added there, too? Or is there not? It's just gonna be the, the shared, the suicide turn lane?
I do not recall off the top of my head.
I couldn't tell, uh, the plans that you, when I had asked this question before, when I saw them, I couldn't tell if there was or wasn't.
I thought there was a right turn lane, so when you would be coming?
From the east?
West, yeah, from the east to the west, um, a turn lane into CC. I think that is it.
I know we had some email correspondence on this, and I, I don't remember.
I believe there is, 'cause I, 'cause we kinda looked into it separately along with the turn lane itself, like the, the shared left turn lane.
It would make sense that there was.
And I think that in the plan, it did have, um, the letters that, that say, like, the, 'cause it's all hard to read, 'cause of the map, and they just put, like, letters that symbolize, um, the turn lane.
I think it's in the screenshot on the email.
Like RTL or something, yeah.
No, I can look into that for sure.
That'd be the only concern I really have, is it'd be nice to have that, so then you're not creating other issues.
Yep. Yeah, I, like I said, I can, I'll look into it.
Some sort of better traffic flow there would've been a lot better than this, but take what we can.
I believe it, it is, according to what Jess was saying, but, um, I can look into that.
Yeah, like I said, as far as the agreement goes, I didn't have any questions on that. It was just that aspect of it.
Great. So, then, if there's no other questions or concerns on that, we would recommend, uh, adopting Resolution Number 2024 dash thirty-six to enter in, into an agreement with, uh, MinDOT.
Are any surrounding properties affected by this at all?
I mean, not to the extent of, no, there's, it's all, all the improvements will be within the state right away.
The only say we had was on project lighting, correct?
What's that?
The only say we had was on project lighting, correct?
Essentially.
Yeah. Nothing else.
Yeah, we didn't have a whole...
I mean, outside of the pedestrian flasher system that we requested to be updated, and the city is, um, they're salvaging the existing flasher system to the city, so that can be used elsewhere.
Perfect.
So, no, there's, yep, it's a MinDOT-led project with minimal city input.
Just the way they like it.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024 dash thirty-six authorizing MinDOT agreement.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Any other updates for us, Spencer?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, 2025 Preliminary Budget Review under Old Business.
Mayor and Council, uh, included in your packet tonight is the changes that have happened, uh, since the preliminary budget for 2025 was approved. On page one twenty-six, you will find, uh, the final capacity from Wright County dropped roughly another seventy-two hundred dollars. So our final capacity amount for 2025, uh, roughly three point eight million. Um, you'll see also the expenses that changed. We discussed, uh, in the general fund, the changes in the benefits being figured from a hundred percent to ninety-five percent, um, which affected the general fund and the community center, basically dropping our expenses four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Um, so as you can see with these changes, uh, what it basically did to the tax rate was, um, increased it point one percent. On pages one twenty-seven and one twenty-eight, um, with the new figures, uh, we have in here the options, the street improvement amounts. Um, at the prelim, we had figured in for five hundred thousand in street improvements for 2025. Um, so basically, uh, what we are looking for tonight is, um, the direction that council would like to go, so we can bring final budget at the December meeting.
I might sound like a broken record on this, and I understand that we need to do what we can to put more into improving the streets, but with the other increases that have been proposed and talked about, um, I, I really would only feel comfortable myself passing the 2025 with the two hundred thousand for street improvements. Um, it's, and I get it's not our fault or the county's fault that the tax capacity dropped the way that it is. It's a new state reading of the statutes that happens way too often when you have state agencies. Um, but I, I just, I don't personally feel comfortable passing one that would increase the, the tax rate by anything more than the ten point zero four percent on there, and, and I get that when we talked about it before, that, you know, we wanted to beef up the street improvements, but I just, that's how I feel. I don't feel comfortable doing that, and I get that we're in this position because of what the state is doing, and it's not just us that's affected, it's so many other cities within Wright County and the county itself. Um, I just, I don't see how we could put any more of that burden on the people in Montrose. So that's, that's where I would be at, is the two hundred thousand, and I understand others may have a different opinion, but just to get the discussion going.
What projects are we looking at next year?
We're looking at the Trail Along Clementa.
Okay. What was the grant on that?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
It was a matching grant?
Uh, yes. I believe city cost was gonna be around four hundred.
Four hundred and three thousand.
Yep.
And then, a- as we look further out, 2026, Clementa, is that kinda what we were thinking?
That is, um, however, we need to confirm, we have future discussions that are planned with staff to review the...
Pavement management?
Improvement plan.
Okay.
Yep. We have a draft in place right now, but we're working to finalize that.
Um, Dan had a meeting last week with Public Works, and they went over the proposed street improvement plan, um, and did make some changes, so, yeah, they're gonna meet and, and discuss that, so, a little more about budget stuff. Um, but they are trying to hold it to a more expensive year and then a less expensive year, to kinda keep that pattern, so that we can save up and bulk up during those times when we're just doing seal coating or something, uh, a little less expensive than a road.
So would four hundred be a less expensive year or a more expensive year?
Well, to get the trail done, to keep the grant.
Yep.
It's kinda a middle of the road, I would say, 'cause some of the least, little, the less expensive years are more like one and two hundred thousand, I wanna say. They're around that kind of range. Um, the four hundred thousand is a little more than a less expensive year would be, but we wanna keep that grant and not return that.
Yeah, definitely wanna keep the grant. Um, remind me again, Clementa was one point two and some change, roughly?
Somewhere, um, there was about one point six million. That included the trail.
Okay, so.
So it's one point two.
Okay.
And for Clementa, we're gonna continue to apply for that other grant that would extend it to help pay for some of that cost?
If they open any of that back up?
Yeah, I don't know that. I haven't seen what the plan is for solicitation on the local road improvement program, but if they do solicit additional projects for funding, then we will definitely be applying for that.
I think in the future, when we apply for that, too, it'd be nice if we could maybe get a, like a letter of support even from, like, Marysville Township, them saying that...
We did have that.
Was it? Okay.
Yep. We had multiple letters of support, so, just didn't quite get it this time.
So if we throw two hundred into road improvement? Four hundred for said project, how are we looking?
Well, we are going to hope that we get another state aid for streets, which would hopefully be another hundred thousand. Um, other than that, I don't know. We'll have to look at maybe some fund transfers or coming up another way.
Really don't wanna get into that situation where we're looking. I understand what you're saying, and I do think that, I mean, my personal thought is, as we sit right now, is, uh, five hundred, yeah, it's probably a little too much to swallow, the close to eighteen percent increase. Um, I would feel more comfortable going to, like, three hundred, so the twelve percent. That's kinda my thought.
I mean, I think we can easily take the five hundred and four hundred off the table, in my opinion. While it would be nice, the cost of everything has gone up, as we've all discussed before.
Mm-hmm.
And with that, all of our road projects get more expensive, but we also don't want to put that big of a burden on the citizens of Montrose. I think three hundred's the right amount to at least cover the one project we have slated, so we're not dipping anywhere else.
Right.
Because we're slightly short at two hundred. Is that correct? Yeah. Three hundred with the potential.
Hundred.
Hundred. Gets us to where we need to be.
It doesn't help fill our coffers for future road projects, but...
No. No, but at least that's a, a good standard of three hundred right at the bat rather than one hundred.
Sounds like you've got the majority for three hundred.
Yep.
Hopefully, we can talk to Wright County in 2025 and...
If we know any commissioners up there, that'd be great.
Throwing that out there.
Uh, new business cannabis-related items.
Mayor and Council, including the packet again for this evening, is the Wright County Power's Agreement. Um, the attorney has made a slight change. The one, the copy in your packet, as well as the copy I put on the table, are the same. Um, they have the wording in there regarding, um, the city zoning ordinances superseding the county, um, and it sounds like the county is going to be agreeable to that. Uh, there is a resolution, the 2024 dash thirty-eight, to approve this contingent on those, um, zoning or, uh, zoning superseding with the city, so. Any more questions about that? I know we've talked about this multiple times.
I, I think that this version of the JPA with that, I, you know, I guess we call it a red line, but it's a blue line in this one, which is fine, um, with that part of it, but what, um, did the attorney have an opinion on whether or not the county would agree to it with that red line, or if they made any inkling on what their thoughts were?
Um, it sounds like they're gonna be agreeable either to that red line or just to put that into the contract, that the city's zoning will supersede the county. Um, I don't know if that's gonna be exact language that we have in here. Um, we can also, as our attorney has reminded me, pull out of this with thirty days' notice, so if it turns out that it's not what we expected it to be, that it doesn't, um, that they're not, you know, honoring our buffing, our zoning buffers, then we can pull out. I don't know what we would do at that point. We'd have to figure it out, but, um, there are options there. I think the county is aware of the, the zoning buffer issue, um, and, and the city's wanting to have that zoning authority as given to us per the state statute, so I think, um, I think we're on the right track here, and I think approving this tonight would, you know, send that message that we will approve it with this added, the stipulation, whether it's best language or some of their language.
Yeah, and I had, um, I had had a conversation with the interim county administrator and, uh, the chair of the county board and had said, uh, 'cause I happened to be there the day after our last meeting, and they already had found out that we didn't agree to the JPA. Um, and they were quite taken back, 'cause they thought everyone was just going to agree to it. Um, and I said that this, it doesn't make sense for the small cities and the small towns that, you know, especially with Montrose, i- it's a very, very large portion of the town that would get taken out because of all the parameters. They wanted to go to, of course, as we talked about last month, the state maximums that are allowed, um, which eliminated most of the town, and, um, they had said that the only, which I didn't, I found this hard to believe, but they said the only responses they got were from the larger cities, Monticello, St. Michael, Otsigo, those areas, and so those were the buffers that they were okay with there, because they have much more area that they cover, so, um, kinda where that conversation got going on this, but I'm glad that they're backing off on it, but I just, I wouldn't wanna see whether or not we would approve a business coming into town that sells cannabis, that we at least have availability for it to be there.
Yeah, that was kinda my whole deal, too, was that, that buffer was just, I mean, yeah, it was way too, we wouldn't be able to do anything going forward.
No, the one the county was proposing at a thousand feet, the state, um, maximum would basically prohibit that nearly everywhere in town.
Yeah.
Except for a very small portion on the very west side of town, so.
I'm glad to see that.
Unless you had a daycare or park.
Correct.
Right.
If we put one out on that side, right.
I'm glad to see that they agreed. I'm glad to see that they agreed and make those changes.
I guess we'll see. And we send them the red line.
That's true. That's fair.
Any other comments or questions on the JPA? Hey, I will make a motion to approve the Wright County joint powers agreement.
The resolution?
Is that oh four?
Uh, 2024-38, that's the one we added.
Oh, yes, okay, yeah, I have it at the bottom, that's why. Uh, okay, I'll make a motion to approve the joint powers agreement with Wright County, Resolution 2024-38.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
How about aye, Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Guess I should have put that at two, but.
That's okay. Second item in the, in the cannabis items tonight is ordinance 2024-04. This is a fairly short and sweet ordinance. I was surprised at how short it was. This is going to prohibit smoking of tobacco and cannabis products of all kinds in the city parks. And then we would just need a motion to approve ordinance 2024-04, to approve that ordinance, and then 2024-37, the resolution to authorize summary publication, if you're in agreement with this ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2024-04.
I will second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-37, resolution authorizing summary publication of the ordinance just passed.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Strategic planning quotes and discussion.
Mayor and council, included in the last few pages of the packet for this evening were some quotes for some strategic planning and goal-setting programs that are offered. There was one that was a company, and then there was another one that is put on by Phil Kern. Some of you may know him from the city of Delano. And if we're interested, it looked like Phil was going to put something more detailed together. You know, Councilmember Otto was kind of working on this, so thank you for that.
I think just kind of based off of what I read on both of those, that the better deal was to go with, with Phil. And he, he knows the area.
And he's familiar with Montrose to a point and with council members already, so that would.
I had discussions with the city admin in Buffalo about Phil, and he's actually going to have him look into doing Buffalos. So I'd, yeah, I'd feel comfortable with, forward with Phil.
So if we have a consensus, we can just move forward and get some more information from him and then possibly approve that in December?
Phil sounds great.
Great.
There's your consensus.
Uh, scheduled date for commission open house in December?
This is something we discussed at the last meeting, having kind of an open house to recruit commission members for Park and Rec, planning zoning, EDA, anything else we want to, volunteers perhaps. I think Josh left, but I don't know if there was a date we were looking at for that.
Well, definitely not the last two weeks with.
Well, I was just going to say, with December being such a busy time regardless, I mean, don't we think we should push this to Q1 of next year?
We could. I, I believe December was discussed.
Yeah, no, I know.
Didn't want to drop it, so.
Yeah, I just think that if we want a good amount of participation, I think we should make it available to where people can actually show up.
Yep. I concur.
Do you want to look at a date in December for January? Do you want to look at a January date now?
What, I'm happy to look at January now.
What kind of day of the week would you be looking at? I would assume we'd want to avoid a Monday or a Wednesday because of council or planning and zoning.
Yeah, this building is used those days. We could possibly look at a Tuesday. You know, we have EDA and.
Park and Rec.
Park and Rec on Tuesdays.
What about a Thursday?
Thursday, they have the food drops and stuff. I don't, I don't know. I'm not super familiar with their schedule. I know that happens on Thursdays, food drops? Tuesdays. Community meals, once a month.
That'll be the third Thursday.
So we could possibly do like the ninth or the 16th. I would stay away from the second.
I, I like the ninth.
Night sounds good to me.
Can we make up a spunky flyer?
Yeah, we could have.
Put it up on the board, too.
Amy, make one up and put it in the newsletter too, for the one that's going to go out, it'd be very beginning of January, so we'll get that and put it on the sign and Facebook and website.
Perfect.
So January 9th. What time are we thinking? Six, seven, five?
All right, we already gave it a date.
Well, you know, I have, I have, and I'm.
So the, if, if you do it at like 6 o'clock or so, would you, would there be any kind of refreshments that would be there? If people wanted water, juice, or donuts, or whatever that we could provide, or meat and crackers?
Get an open bar, and we'd probably get more people participate. Then we'd have to hire a deputy, though.
Stay away from that. Yeah, we can order some refreshments for that night. That's no problem.
Shoot for six?
Six o'clock?
January 9th, 6 o'clock.
Do you think it'd be possible in December to get all commissions and council together so we can have a good plan of attack for this night? 30 minutes, just to make sure we're all planning out something.
When is?
What about the Park and Rec meeting?
I was thinking planning and zoning, so they'd be there.
Otherwise, we could have council members come to those meetings. I, I don't know. It's just hard to get people outside of their meeting to come.
Yeah.
Because I know EDA people have scheduling conflicts with evenings.
How about us five, since we all are on a commission, make sure we all have the same words of encouragement of what's needed for that night? So that everybody's on the same page, and that there's preparedness.
Yeah.
And we're not just hosting an event where there's nothing being done.
So are we going to, we're going to require the commission members to show up on January 9th?
I don't think a requirement, I would say it'd be great if you could stop by.
Many as we can get, that would be.
Sure, I think the chair for sure.
Chair for sure, yes.
And then staff, we can bring all of the commission paperwork type stuff, applications, descriptions, all that kind of jazz.
Highly encouraged attendance.
Highly encourage those people to attend, obviously. Yeah, we'll see.
Is it just going to be for the commissions, or is it going to be for all volunteer groups? Kind of like?
I think all volunteer groups. Yeah, because then if people who want to volunteer, like for the Park and Rec stuff, are there too, I think it would be a good place to just get everybody, everybody here and discussing things.
What date is the newsletter going out?
It'll probably go out late December. We can push that too, so.
Just wanted to make sure we weren't going to send it out and then.
No, they usually will get it. Newsletter usually comes out for a few days of the month, so we'll aim for that again.
Finalized to be printed 12/20, so, you know, be pretty close.
Okay, um, January 9th, 6 PM, chairs will be highly encouraged to attend, and other commission members and volunteer groups can also attend. No open forum requests. Upcoming meetings, Park and Rec, Tuesday, November 12th, that was earlier today, 5:30. Uh, planning and zoning, November 13th, Wednesday, canceled. EDA, next Tuesday, the 19th, canceled. And the next regular city council meeting, uh, which will also be the truth in taxation, is December 9th at 7 PM here at the community center. Acknowledgements, recognitions, or announcements. I'm going to go first. I'm not letting mine get stolen this time, so. I would like to put out just an acknowledgement to all the veterans, especially since yesterday was Veterans Day. There's, there's never enough thanks or praise that we can give to those people that had decided to lay their life on the line and do everything they did and join the military to protect our freedoms. And then the other thing that I wanted to just say too is just a, a thanks to everybody who ran for a public office or city council. It just shows the dedication that you have as a member of your community. Now you guys can go.
I want to thank the election judges for all that they did. It was a busy year. It's a process, even though some other people, you know, as we've seen, think it's, you have to work it to know it, to understand it. So I thank you guys for all the hard work that you did. And then Christie and Josh, for all their work that they're doing on Park and Rec. Josh for getting all of his, you know, volunteer programs together, Christie for working with Buffalo and the ball teams. Just thank you guys for everything you guys do.
It, it can never be said enough, and actually, I was out last night and witnessing some of the businesses that were honoring veterans with a free meal, something as simple as that. What they did and continue to do for this country is amazing, and I don't think we can ever thank them enough. Everybody that worked the election, that was a long day for you. We all appreciate it. Everybody that participated in the election, not only by running, but voting. I think that's a very important part of our country. That's about it for me.
It's already been said three times, but veterans, I mean, obviously, one day is just, is not enough to give, to show appreciation. And then election judges and everybody who came out, it's a, it's a very long day, and there's a lot that goes into hosting and running an election. So, good, thanks to that.
Ditto.
Uh, and just because you three are here, but I won't exclude Dan either, but, you know, Jackie, Christie, and Jessica, I just want to thank you guys too for what you do at City Hall, and Spencer for being here too. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
There's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oops, sorry, I mean, I'll second that. Now, now all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, we're adjourned. A little ahead on that one.